All right, great. Good evening and welcome to a special meeting of the Phillips Town Planning Board, November 30th, 2021. I understand that this meeting will be covered by Chris Cuomo as a freelancer now that he has left CNN moments ago, so that's, that's good to know. We'll get some involved coverage there. No, just kidding. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Bob, why don't you lead us in the pledge? How fun would that be?
Okay, you ready? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice, law. Hey, before we get started, I just want to say thanks to everybody for doing these extra meetings all month long. This is the third meeting of the month, so I really appreciate everybody's time here. Thank you. And I hope everyone had a nice Thanksgiving.
Thanks for saying that, Bob. I guess it's a couple of preparatory remarks before we get started. The first is, and we can let the applicant in, Cheryl, in their seconds. I do want to congratulate the Chris Davis and Shakespeare in the group. I saw that, as many I'm sure did, about the very large multimillion dollar grant by the state ESDC, and that, that says a lot for the project. It says a lot about its promise and its broad appeal. And I think, secondly, I think I speak for the board when I say, and I hope my colleagues are in alignment, that I don't think, I think everyone feels that this project has great value for this community. I don't think this conversation that we've been on is a debate about its merits as a social benefit to the community. I think both our heads and our hearts see the value of this project. I think the third comment I want to make, though, is that the, this board is tasked obligatorily with performing diligence on this project, and the secret process we're in the middle of is a fundamental piece because we, we represent the town. No one individual, no one group, we represent the town and its interests, and we have, as I said, said many, many times, we balance property rights, individual property rights with community rights, and that's the work we're doing. So the last thing I want to say is the process this evening will be the same process we did, I think that was four weeks ago, when we engaged in the first part roughly of the SECRE of EAF Part III review. We used this table of contents, which you all, I'm sure, know. It just led her A through O, A, B, C, D, et cetera, O being the, the most unfortunate letter, because now it's the name of our new variant. But we went through, I believe, last time, A through F, land use, geology, topography, vegetation, wetland, stormwater, and utilities, G. We also covered I, visual resources. Tonight, we're going to cover H and then J through O, and that will, I hopefully will get that done this evening. That will complete our discussion, at least about the, the contents of the part three. From there, of course, the board will then want to discuss as a group its total viewpoints, and then, as I've said many times, we're going to have public input at that point, and then we'll go and make our secret determination as the process were in. So tonight, we're going to do a three-part, just like we did last time when we got together for each letter. I'll just call out the letter, and we'll start with H traffic. The applicant will be allowed to comment, whatever they want to say about what's here. Then we'll turn to our advisors from AKRF, Aaron, and who was your colleague tonight, Aaron?
Hi, everybody. It's Aaron from AKRF. Yeah, we have Alex Ald from AKRF's traffic group. Should be in the waiting room. If not, let me know when I can figure out.
We should let him in because we're going to start with H, and then indoor, indoor Ron Gaynor to comment about whatever is here, providing both. We've already covered completeness. The topic now is about what it says, and then the board members will go in turn about folks' questions they have and emerging viewpoints about what's here. I don't think there's going to be any surprises about what we're going to talk about, but we have, we have detail to get through as part of our diligence. So that's the process we're going through this evening. Hopefully, there are no questions, but of course, I'll pause there to see if there are. Peter, please.
Hi, I just wanted to make sure the, on the same page here. I'm using the, the Expanded Environmental Assessment Form of October 21. Am I on the wrong? The wrong?
Well, so, so Peter, as we talked about last time, there are two, I'll just take my camera because that's the benefit of ignoring the mess of my garage. There are two documents. There is this large document, which is dated September 21st. This is the main original document. Then there's a separate, and then there's a separate hymnal that was provided in October, and that document is a response by the applicant to specific questions that AKRF provided. They must be held, in my opinion, in tandem, because you've got to go to Chapter H of one and Chapter H of the other and toggle between the two because I, I think it would have been unfair to then say, now go back and reprint us the big black binder with everything in it. We could have done that. I think we chose not to do that. So unfortunately, there are two documents that are required to be reviewed in tandem.
No problem. Have them both.
That's why I'm standing tonight, because there's a, my desk is taking up all the material. So other process questions, please. Okay, then let's, let's begin with Chapter H traffic. We'll start with Mr. Hollis, if you want to say anything.
I think we're just still waiting on Alex to join. It would be great to have him on for this part. I just want to.
Well, yeah, it seems like that would be his value. He's, he's your traffic guy.
Yeah. Sounds like he's not in the waiting room, Cheryl?
Right. I don't see him.
What I have to say is not substantive, if I might, Mr. Chairman?
Well, if it's not substantive, I'm all ears, Dan.
I'm not a traffic expert, but I, you've already beaten me to the punch by saying what section you want to address first. We're prepared to address any of them in any order you want. We're glad to go with traffic, and for our team, I just want to say that our goal is the same as yours, to be able to get through all of this this evening. So your board at the end of the evening would be in a position to be able to set your public meeting or hearing for the December 26th, there's December 16th meeting of your board.
That's, Dan, I, just a couple of things. One, I'm not sure we're going to be doing that this evening. We're definitely going to be talking tonight, and whether, and I think would be appropriate is this board has a chance to talk amongst itself publicly, because we can't meet privately at a set, set, set date after that. This public hearing will need a dedicated time. We cannot put it in the middle of another meeting, because otherwise, we're going to be doing it for a long time. So I think we're going to have to set a date, not in December 16th. That's not going to happen.
Okay.
But I appreciate the, the Glenn Watson-esque attempt to get it scheduled early.
I try to continue to learn from those around me, Mr. Chairman.
Well, Glenn, Glenn has taught us all the technique of client advocacy. I've learned a great deal myself. Okay.
Okay, Cheryl, Alex is on the phone. She said he called in. He should have a 914 number. Do you see that?
Yes, the first one.
Yeah, let me move that.
Okay, so, but, but Dan, does anyone from your team want to say anything as we get started? About H, about Chapter H, that is.
Sorry, I muted myself. Yes, Mr. Canning's ready to roll.
Great. So John, do you want to give any opening comments? I don't, I don't see John. Maybe we have to let John into.
Yeah, John's not showing up either unless he's a 917 number.
Alex has just joined. If everyone can hear me.
Yes.
Yes, Alex, we can hear you. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I don't see John Canning unless his, is a number ending in 138, the 917.
I'm going to call him right now.
Dan, Dan, here's what I'm going to do. Why don't we do this? Why don't we jump to J then? Because John is pretty important to a traffic conversation.
John just texted me. He's here.
Oh, all right.
You see him, Cheryl?
Sorry, not by name, so let me try that number.
He says he's getting in as we speak.
Okay, I just saw him now. One sec.
Thank you. There he is.
Good evening. Sorry for my tardiness.
You're good to go, John?
Pretty much.
John, let me just back, let me just back up where we were. We did our, our superfluous introductory remarks. Then we said we're going to go through H through O, skipping over I since we did last time, and we had the three parts that we did last time. The applicant gets the comment, then our, our advisors will comment, however they think appropriate to guide the board, then we'll go in turn by board members to ask questions and or share a viewpoint. So the floor is yours for anything you want to say related to Chapter H, traffic, transportation, and parking.
Super. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Sorry, for some reason, I looked up your website and it's 7:30, so that was my bad. So thank you and good evening. Hope you all had a good holiday. As you know, the application is for approval to relocate the current Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival activities from Bosco Bell in place of the former golf activities at that location, and hopefully to add a 225-seat theater, 20-room inn, along with artist lodging, and of course, Mr. Davis' private residence. Further, the current application will replace traffic and parking activities with the golf courses I mentioned. We can also roll back potential traffic associated with the largest banquet activities, and it will eliminate the development potential of a spa on the site, which was committed under the 2025 EDD approved. We believe and we hope that we have responded to all of the board members' requests for additional information and studies as completely as possible, and we've done the same for all the boards' traffic consultants' requests for clarification of additional materials. We did, as you know, conduct an extensive traffic study, which evaluated traffic and parking operating conditions on the site along Route 9, Coleman Road, Snake Hill Road, and along Snake Hill Road from Route 9 to Route 9B. Even on the busiest days, because of the variability of the various uses and the measures proposed as part of the Traffic and Parking Management Plan, no more than 350 vehicles are projected to enter or exit the site at this hour. Importantly, to accommodate future traffic and parking activity at the site, the following operational and physical improvements have been proposed as part of the project. I'll go through them slowly. If anybody is confused about any of this, raise your hand or stop me. It's proposed to add turn lanes northbound and southbound on Route 9 at the site driveway, and DOT has agreed that these turn lanes are, that the left turn lanes warrant. It's also proposed to widen the Route 9 driveway to provide two exiting lanes. As you're aware, it's proposed to relocate and widen the Snake Hill Road driveway. It's proposed to increase sidelines at the facility driveways. Also proposed to install a much-needed traffic signal at the intersection of US Route 9 with Snake Hill Road and Travis Corners Road. And again, DOT provided an email that indicated that the need for a traffic signal is warranted. I'm, you know, preparing detailed plans to submit to DOT.
John, would it be possible for you to screen share, maybe put up the site plan and show the lanes that you're talking about, widening areas, and be helpful for the board to actually see what you're talking about?
You're, let me try to do that. Yeah, do you know, are the site plans, they're not in the EAF, right?
There's exhibits in the EAF, John, but the, the site development plans were included as an attachment.
Okay, there are two dozen attachment. Were they in the September submission?
I, I couldn't, I could attempt to find the EAF and, and share my screen if you give me a moment.
Okay. I'm looking for them as well.
Glenn Watson, I have it.
You have it? Okay, Dan, if you want to share, I think I might, so why don't you share?
Okay. You see it?
Yep.
All right, I'll try and make it a little bigger.
Okay. So again, if, if I can ask you to zoom in a little bit on, on the top, in the center of the top, you can see the driveway. Zoom in a little bit more, please. Okay, it's, it's a little hard to see there because we're showing the site triangles, but we are proposing to re-strike northbound Route 9 in the big triangle area provided northbound left turn lane. You'll see just to the left of that, there's a little painted median where the roadway is divided. There probably a left turn lane to go home and home as well. Then in the southbound direction, right turn lane under the sideline triangle, and then going out, you can see there's a, there's a a median between the inbound and exit, inbound and outbound lanes, which was something that the board asked for, and there's two lanes going out, one left and one right. Then, Dan, if you want to just push it down to the right. Yeah. This is the intersection of Snake Hill Road, which is the bottom leg, Travis Corners Road, which is on the top. It's proposed to put a trap, install a traffic signal at this location. It's also proposed to re-strike the Snake Hill Road approach. There's a sufficient width there as you approach the intersection to have a separate lane for left-moving and through-moving vehicles, and then a separate, another lane for right-turning vehicles. So if you were turning right, you could go right on red and you'd be held up behind everybody waiting to turn back. So if you can slide it down to the right, please, now. Thank you. So it proposed to relocate the driveway, which is right now at the head of the dam or the foot of the dam, which is sliding down about 300 feet to the right. We'll be providing improved sidelines above the street section of the road there. We'll be improving the width of the driveway, because it's kind of narrow now over three wide, number one-way traffic over the dam now, so we'll be widening to way traffic. I think those are all of the physical improvements. Let me just briefly mention about the traffic signal. It's scheduled to be constructed and operational prior to the commencement of the 2024 performance season. And H Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival will not start operations at the indoor theater or the hotel before the signal is operation, operational. If there should be any reason that we couldn't get it done, I don't see any reason why we can't get it done by 2024, because that's two years from now. But Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival is committed not to starting operation of the indoor theater or the hotel prior to the signal's operation. It's also proposed to continue the use of a chitney to ferry guests from the garrison to the train station. It, we will be encouraging, Chip actually does this a fair bit at the garrison now, to banquet guests to use buses to travel to and from the events, a lot of the larger events, banquet events at the venue now use buses so that people can relax and enjoy themselves, don't have to worry about drinking and driving. There will be event schedule management coordination. We have an extensive traffic and parking management plan, which we have submitted to you, and it outlines both an annual, a monthly, and a weekly regimen that will be required so that the operators will understand well in advance what the levels of activity at the site will be, and then as the time for performances and events approaches, they can fine-tune their plans to make sure they're still going to accomplish what they need to do to accommodate traffic and parking. The Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival has committed not to have indoor matinee performances on a same Saturday when there's an afternoon wedding, and that was at the suggestion of your consultants to eliminate any traffic impacts and restore operating conditions to level of service E at the Snake Hill Road approach to Route 9D. And also, obviously, there will be the deployment of train staff equipped with the appropriate directional signage, two-way radios at all of the parking and drop-off areas to direct traffic during busy event days. Our recently revised analyses indicate that with, with the implementation of these measures, delays to motorists on Route 9 will see little increase, if any, except if they have to stop at the new traffic signal during the rush hour of the Friday evening, with guests starting to arrive for two heavily attended shows, a large banquet, and to go to the restaurant, the average delay at the intersection is projected to be just 30 seconds. And during the other peak hours, the average delay at the intersections projected to be just 12 seconds. During the busiest hours with customers exiting the garrison, the Route 9 driveway will have an average wait time of 45 seconds to leave the property. That delay will be confined to motorists exiting the property or guests of the garrison. The, the impacted traffic on Broadway will be less than, on Route 9, sorry, Broadway down here, on Route 9 will be less than two seconds. At Snake Hill Road, the delay will average just 10 seconds, because Snake Hill Road is a much less busy road, and delays will be less than two seconds on Snake Hill Road as well. We did perform a special NCHRP, that's a National Cooperative High Rate Research Project, report 825 method analysis for the Snake Hill Road corridor specifically, for the purpose of addressing whether there would be sufficient capacity along the corridor as opposed to the intersections. This was a suggestion or request of one of the board members. That analysis indicated that Snake Hill Road would be operating at less than 15% of its capacity even in the peak hours, which is a level of service B. At the intersection of Snake Hill Road with US Route 9D, traffic delays will generally be reduced with the relocation of Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival activities from Bosco Bell to garrison, because obviously, current activities put a lot of traffic on Route 9B at that intersection, and while there will be some traffic traveling to the site at the garrison, it'll be less than what's traveling to Bosco though through that intersection right now. And as I've previously mentioned, with the elimination or the, not the scheduled matinee performances on Saturday at the indoor theater, when there's a wedding, an afternoon wedding, delays at the Snake Hill Road approach to this intersection will only be increased by 0.2 seconds. So our conclusion from a perspective of traffic is that the implementation of these measures, with the implementation of these measures, the project will not have a significant adverse effect, and I've described the impacts to you. With regard to onsite parking and onsite population, the maximum ever projected parking demand, which we believe will never materialize, is 560 vehicles with just over 1,200 individuals on the site. The maximum practical number of people that I would expect that will ever be on the site at the same time, based on our analyses, is 1,125 with 465 parked cars. This is less than the parking for the 500 vehicles that can be accommodated on the main portion of the site, and a significantly fewer than the total of 630 cars that be, to be accommodated or parked on the entire site. I know the, the board members are trying to sort of, for work, I'm sure many of you have the stage, trying to sort of get, gauge the level of activity, and we previously indicated to you that the activity at a maximum attended event at the garrison with all of the proposed uses will be slightly less than halfway between the level of activity at a maximum attended event at Hyde Park and the maximum attended event at the culinary institute of America, if that's helpful. These maximum events will occur only five days per year based on a review of the records of 2019 for Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival. And as indicated in the materials provided, for over half of the year, or 185 days, there are expected to be 400 or fewer individuals on the site at any given time. So I'm, I'm sorry I've taken up so much of your time, but traffic is a pretty, traffic and parking is a pretty extensive topic, and we, I tried to cover all of the bases, and I'm more than happy to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Let's, let's turn to AKRF and Ron Gaynor for any comments they want to make about either the materials themselves or the, the insights that you shared just now. I think, I think, John, you can remove the, the picture so we can just see everybody, please.
So I'll start, and then I'll have Alex jump in, just to give a summary. So we, we did go back and forth a lot, John's office on this, dating back to the September submission. There was some, originally, there was a kind of a, an issue with the reporting of results, you know, which methodology was used. We cleared that up, but we still found, and this was in a memo to the board back in November, early November, that the Snake Hill Road and 9D intersection was the only place where we actually had a quantified impact noted, as the level of service dipped from E to F at that location. So we called that out. We made that clear to the board that we were concerned about this, and that, you know, the applicant should look to some kind of programming or operational adjustment to eliminate that impact. So that they've come back with the eliminating the matinee, Saturday matinee at the same day where there's a wedding event or however it was described. As, which can be a condition of approval ultimately, if we get to that point, to make sure that that's an operational measure that's in place to preclude an impact at that location. So with that in place, there really isn't any quantified impact from a SECRE, SECRE perspective as a result of the review. So I'll, I'll hand it over to Alex, and he can add anything that I may have left off, but that was our position going into tonight.
Thank you. Thanks, Aaron. Just to follow up on what Aaron just mentioned, in terms of the technical analysis, we reviewed the latest submission that John had provided, John Canning had provided us with, and we had went through the details and all of the inputs and the outputs of the SNCRA analysis, which is what, what actually reports the, the level of service and delay values. So we, we went back, we reviewed the trip generation, we reviewed the trip distribution with the modified building program, just to verify that the results that we saw in, in the, in the updated memo indeed matched all the inputs that were generated into the SNCRA model. So based on our review, we verified everything, and based on our review, we, we are in agreement with the results, and we, we were content with the reporting of level service E for build conditions, and based on our, our threshold for impacts, we see no impacts at the location.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, board members, just going in order, I mean, not in order, but people can just start with Neil Toman is, just back to the beginning. Sarah, she's on some other call, is not going to be able to join, so that's unfortunate for, but I think we have obviously well over a quorum, so let's, let's go, people with their thoughts, questions. Okay, Heidi, please.
My question, I read the manage, the traffic management plan, and it's certainly very detailed in terms of the monitoring the traffic, but my question is, how will it be decided if maybe contrary to expect, or hopes, the traffic situation is more problematic than were, than expected? I mean, would there be some condition in the, in the approval that would indicate that the indoor theater wouldn't even be built if there's, or like the project would be sort of scaled back to just the outdoor tent? And I guess the, the initial phase, if traffic problems, you know, come, result from that initial phase, is there, is there a way to do that, or? I'm just, that's just a, I couldn't make out from the materials how that would work in terms of the staged construction, whether there might be a point at which there would be something in the approvals that the rest of the project would not even be built out if there's traffic problems, and what, and how we would recognize if there are traffic problems?
Sure. So the way the traffic management plan is supposed to work, in addition to planning ahead, you're supposed to log basic parking demand incidents as you go through here, and at the end of the year, you go back and say, well, you know, what happened? This was a bad day. Why didn't it happen? What should we do differently? And it's important to note that there will be a number of years before the hotel is even construction even starts, so the applicant will be able to establish operations with the banquet, with the restaurant, with the tent, and figure out how to work those three uses before the hotel, the hotel and the and, and the indoor theater even come along. So at that stage, and the applicant is required to do this annually, the applicant will know whether adding the hotel will be a problem or not. And presumably, if they haven't figured out how to make it work, I, I'm sure they will, but presumably. And presumably, if they haven't figured out how to make it work, I'm sure they will, but presumably, if they haven't figured out how to make it work with the three elements, it would be unwise of them to even contemplate going forward with the hotel. So I don't believe that there's a, a requirement of the plan that they not build the hotel or not build the indoor theater. There's a requirement that if they build the indoor theater, they make sure that it works with what's there. And that may be have the indoor theater only operating when you don't have the tent. Performances in the tent, but it's, it would be up to the applicant to manage. That's the requirement that they make sure they have enough parking and that the, there's not congestion at the driveways that impacts traffic on Route Nine or Snake Hill Road. So I'm not sure if that explains it, that they, they will be monitoring and managing it. And if they come to build it and they think there's going to be a problem, they have to decide whether they want to build it or not. When they build it, they have to operate it so that it doesn't impact traffic. And that could mean not operating it for the really busy days for other activities.
Also, we remind the board that the traffic management plan is implemented all the years at Bosque Bell has worked very, very well. So we have a track record of very sound traffic management plans that have been operational through the years.
Thank you. And Hudson Valley is committed not to having the indoor theater operate on Saturday afternoons when there's a wedding. So that's one measure that would be a condition of approval, presumably that the application goes that far.
Heidi, if I may, they are going to be obligated to comply with their traffic management plan. I'm sure that'll be a condition of approval. The fact of the matter is that the traffic management plan that they're proposing and the site improvements they're proposing are all that the town is entitled to. If for whatever reason the plan they're proposing doesn't work, if the improvements they're getting approved, improvements they're getting approved aren't sufficient, you know, it's going to be, if they make changes beyond that, it's going to be voluntary on their part. You're being asked to approve this plan as proposed. And if it doesn't work, they're not going to have an obligation not to build it out as per their approvals. If they don't, it'll be voluntary.
Okay, well, but Steve, I mean, they already agreed to a concession about the matinees at the, at the indoor theater. So I'm just wondering if there could be some more objective criteria like that with respect to whether it's working two years from now in terms of the traffic. But if you're telling me there isn't going to be, it's going to remain sort of amorphous. I mean, we have a lot of traffic problems in this area, so here and there.
Right. What I'm telling you is if there are conditions that you want imposed, if you're not satisfied with something in the traffic management plan, now's the time to speak about it. You can't count on, well, it didn't pan out the way we thought it was going to, so they can't build the hotel.
That is why, that's why I raised it, because I'm hoping to speak about it. Yeah, that's why I raised it. Yeah, thanks, Steve.
Heidi, other things, anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay, Laura?
Yeah, I guess my question, so Steve, so just a quick question. So if they're designing and submitting for the max, then, and then if in the future they decide to do whatever they decide to do, if we've agreed or if they've been given approval for X, whatever traffic pattern, whatever total parking spaces, whatever that is, then, you know, look, ultimately, if they've maxed out with the hotels such that, you know, it houses X and their theater can be, their theater can be built, but it has to be smaller, then they have to fit within that guideline unless they want to come back to us and apply for a larger footprint. Is that correct?
That is correct. If they've proposed a number of, I don't say mitigating measures, they're, 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 there are steps that they've incorporated into the plan. And it's things like, well, we're not going to have a wedding on a Saturday at the same time as we have a show. And that'll be a condition of approval. They've offered it. And that will just objectively limit the amount of traffic on those days. And you have to look to our traffic experts as well as John Canning's input on this to determine if that mitigation, that limitation on the amount of traffic is going to be sufficient so that there's no significant adverse impact to traffic. Now, there's going to be more traffic on the site because you're putting new things on. But the question is, is it a significant adverse impact or have, as their plan, you know, managed the traffic to the point where, yes, there'll be more, but it won't be a significant adverse impact?
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I mean, just to kind of, just to unpack what I'm thinking is, is that we're approving X, which is a significant change from what we have today or potentially not, right? But what I just don't want to do is to say like, we're, like, whatever we approve is X. And then if they decide to do anything in the future, that we're not approving that as well. Or like, we take that into consideration and we bake that in, into the current application, which is fine as well. We just need to understand like, you know, what the total ramifications is, if that makes any sense.
So Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yeah, go ahead, John.
Yeah, so, so we have a study from a parking and traffic perspective and from an impact perspective on those resources. Everything that the applicant is applying for, all happening on the same day. It could happen and it probably will happen three or four times a year. But we're not, we're not going to ask for anything more than what we've studied. So it's, you know, it's the tent, it's the theater, it's the banquet, it's the restaurant, it's the hotel. And we've studied for all of that. We're not going to ask for any more. And we're committed to making it work. We're providing a lot of physical improvements. And we're committed to continuing and formalizing the, the traffic management strategies and parking management strategies to make the site work.
Thank you, John. Others, Laura, anything else? No. Dennis, Peter, or Kim, go ahead.
So I just have one question and it's, it's more of a sort of trying to understand traffic. So I guess I'm going to direct it to John and to, I can't remember his name and it's not on the screen.
Alex.
Alex, thank you. So I see that it looks like from the entrance on Route Nine, you can come out of the site and turn left.
Correct.
And, and I just wanted to know what the thinking behind not making that a, you know, a one-way in, a one-way out kind of system, like just what the reason for that might be.
Well, the, the analysis that we have performed indicates that a couple of things. One, the majority of traffic to and from Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival is to the south. There is traffic that goes to the north, but it's the minority. The analysis that we've performed indicates that the capacity is there to accommodate the left turn lane. The sightlines are there to accommodate left turn lane and the levels of delay are not excessive. And so it's a benefit to the customers. And it's particularly a convenience when you don't have a major event, that you don't have to drive all the way down to Snake Hill Road and wait turn left through the signal. So we believe that the, the left turn lane can be accommodated there, should be accommodated there. And that's what we put to this board, to your consultants, and thus we also put to DOT in our permanent application.
Okay. Just curious.
Yep, thank you.
I think that's it for me, Neil.
Dennis or Peter?
I'm good now.
Yeah, Neil?
A question, I'm not sure who we directed to, but what's the possibility in the future? I'm talking about down the road of this evolving a little bit more to having special events like Winter Festival or something similar to the Renaissance Festival or an Oktoberfest where we have another use of this venue versus just Shakespearean performances? And again, I'm not sure who we could answer that.
Yeah, it's not me, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I can speak to that. We're, you know, we're interested in the site being an asset for the community. And we've already started some conversations, very beginning stages with other nonprofit organizations in Phillips Town about how the spaces at the garrison could be shared. So I think there could be other community activities there. You know, for example, a place to vote on the Tuesday in November or the Phillips Town Climate Smart Task Force has our meetings in the large meeting rooms at the garrison. But I don't envision the kind of events that you just mentioned, a big, you know, cider festival or Oktoberfest or, or things like that. That's, that's not really part of the vision for what the site is.
Hey, thank you.
Okay. All right. So I'm going to ask some questions and not surprisingly, they're going to be about traffic. And there are going to be a number of them. Let me just start with two things, John, you raised, because they, they are, they're, they're, they're on more of your agenda than mine, which is the following. You mentioned that they're not going to start the indoor theater operations until after 2024, when this light is in. If I may direct your attention to page six of the whole, of the original Big Binder. It states that the indoor theater would not be built until five years, five to fifteen years after phase one is complete, which will be completed, as it says here, in 2024. That means regardless of the light, according to this document, that indoor theater is not being built to 2029. But what you said intimated that it would be built as soon as the light is in. So which is it?
Well, I, I think what I was trying to say is that it will not be built before the light. Because it would be more traffic and we want to commit and be clear that the light is going in. So the actual, the actual date is really dependent upon fundraising and the success of Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival. The soonest, and Davis correctly, if I'm wrong, the soonest possible, even remotely possible, would be after 2024. But I think realistically, it's probably a few years after 2024.
I think it's probably more years than that, significant of the kind that Neil was speaking about.
I'm not speaking about, they're, they're written in the document that says no earlier than 2029 will the indoor theater be built. So I'm just trying to get more precision than what John is saying.
I think that's absolutely accurate, Mr. Chairman. I think what John was trying to point to is the fact that the traffic study is the full build out. And that would only happen if and when a light is approved and built.
And that makes sense. And I realize John is not the programming lead, if I get that. My second comment to some, John, you said, I'm going, I'm going to, there's no page number on it, but it's sitting in appendix E. This chart that you need extremely good vision to read.
Yeah.
And which I, I thank God I have these handy dandy glasses to read with. Because those small little numbers would be impossible to read otherwise. But you, you cited the number, the eleven hundred and something, eleven, geez, I can't, eleven twenty-four, I believe, is the number. And I'm sorry, fellow board members, the middle column called Ebb and Flow.
Yes.
You know, August has, Jesus Christ, I got to see an eye doctor, eleven twenty-four. Well, they're, they're a few years old, these glasses. So the eleven twenty-four number is the weekend number, the weekday number is ten, I think it says ninety-six, that's people. And you said it'd only be five days a year would be that number. Yet the week, this says August weekend, July weekend is ten ninety-seven, then it says weekday is ten ninety-six. That's, there are five weekdays and there are two weekend days. And across three months, that's a lot of days. That sounds like ninety days to me. That are pretty close to eleven hundred, but you only said five days. So there, to me, there's a dissonance there between five days and ninety days. And I'm trying to get a sense of that, because those are very different.
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to find my tiny little chart myself. And I thought I had it open. So we have weekday, June. We, we have under eleven hundred, under eleven hundred guests. Every time except June weekends and August weekends.
But just to be clear, it just, let's read the numbers. Instead of under eleven, it's ten hu, a thousand ninety-six is what you said.
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah. I, I, I agree. I agree. It's
I mean, I'm just quibbling with between, I, I just think the state out there, there's five days of a lot. This is about, this is eleven hundred people minus four for ninety days straight.
Well, yeah, but it's not, it's not five days, it's not five days a week.
Okay.
I mean, Mr. Chairman, if I might, you know, just from the, the empirical data from our years at Bosque Bell, we know that it's several Saturdays, the last Saturday, July, and the first three Saturdays of August that are the only times we ever sell that tent to one hundred percent capacity or even close. So I think that's what John is speaking of, that, that, you know, if we were to extend the season into September, maybe the first two weekends of September would also be, you know, a, a ticket that would, would reach full capacity. But those days, you know, in the theater business are, are, are just extremely rare. And, you know, we have seventy-five performances in the summer and we have, you know, less than five performances that are above ninety-five percent of a full capacity.
Actually, and, and thank you, Davis. Mr. Chairman, if I may, I've finally managed to read this. The middle chart, right, says Ebb and Flow Expected Maximum Attendance. So that's the expected maximum attendance each month. But if you look below, it's the expected average attendance. The bottom line is the average attendance. So those numbers are in the eight hundred. They're all under nine hundred except one. So while
That's, that's based on, can you just explain that, that section, please? Average based on what? Just, just give us a little bit more on that, please.
Sure. So we, we got a year of data from, well, it was, it was only a summer for starters because it was the tent. And it went from, I'm going to say the second week in June to the first week in September. And there were, I'm going to say fifty performances, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. So we sifted through all of that data and we identified what the busiest day, what the busiest, the highest number of attendees on a Monday was, a Tuesday was, and a weekday was, but the highest number on a weekend was and by month. And that's what we used to project the expected maximum attendance. But then we went back to the data and we said, well, let's look at the average for weekday and the average for weekend. And that's what we put at the bottom of the table. So you, you will get higher than the average, you'll get lower than the average, and you may get up as high one day a month as what we've got in the middle of the table.
That's very helpful. So look, 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 those are the two reacting to what you said. So here's where I'm coming from. And I've said this multiple times, I'm most interested in understanding the maximum number of cars leaving that space. Because it is significant change to what the local area has currently. It is just, that's a, that's a factual statement, that's not an opinion comment, that there's a material change. And I'm trying to foot, John, across foot me, foot being in term, a lot of us using math or research to put one analysis together another, because I'm getting lost in some of the analyses. And let me just suggest what I'm talking about. In this chart we're talking about here, where you've got to, you were citing the eleven hundred and twenty-one, it has twelve hundred and eleven at the top, right? We all know, we, right, this is your analysis that has most of the programming here. For some reason, you don't have the bar in here, but it's got mostly everything else, the number of workers, all that good stuff. And that has, let's just use the max number, the twelve hundred number, just for kicks, okay? So you got that number. And then I'm going back and I'm trying to foot it to this analysis. This is page fifty-six of, I guess, the Kim, the Kim Lee Horn analysis. And this is, this is where you get the three hundred and twenty-nine cars, which is in most of the, the write-up on the traffic section. So what I'm trying to understand, John, because I see some components in here that are not listed in the, your, let's call it an I chart, the one that's very small, right? Just, just for, just so we know what I'm pointing to. So there are components in these roads that are not in the components of your I chart. I'm trying to understand how you get the three hundred and twenty-nine cars from twelve hundred people. And I, I can't tell, and again, I'm, I'm, I'm doing this at a hide, I'm not going to charge you my, my rate I charge, you know, corporations to do this analysis. But I'm trying to find out why and how you get twelve hundred people down to But I'm trying to find out why and how you get 1200 people down to 300 cars, which is roughly, you know, 3.7 pi, which I know is not the number you're using. Sure. I can see different things that are missing here. I see maybe you're calling it additional, so maybe it's on top of something else. But I cannot understand where you get, I get the people, I don't get the number of cars because the volume of cars is what matters to me personally. Because I think it or not personal, but individually, because I believe there are a lot of cars and I'm trying to understand it.
Okay, so there's, you're right, there's a lot of people and there's still a lot of cars. And it's sort of a complicated issue. So let me try to walk through them piece by piece and tell you where we lose people and where we gain people. Right off the bat, I'd be upfront and say, for the attendees at the performances, we assumed there would be 2.1 people per car. Actually, it wasn't really an assumption. It was a calculation based on the survey of Boston Bell. And that was for guests of the 700 something people that would be in the tent, so 2.1. We, for staff, I think we did 1.5 for for the Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival staff that drive. Some of the Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival folks don't drive because they live on the campus. And all of these are little small pieces, the 2.1 is a big one, but all of these are in small pieces that come down. For the restaurant, we used the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual, which basically projects how much traffic you have based on seats. And it works out to about two people per car anyway. For the banquet, we assumed that there would be 100 people coming by bus and 100 people coming by car for a 200 person event. And Chip can speak to this in a moment, but that's quite typical for what they have there. And that's part of what the traffic management plan will say is if you're going to have everything going on and you're planning these in advance, they're going to require them to come by bus. That's actually another fairly substantial one. At the next one is there's a certain amount, not a lot, but a certain amount of interaction. So if I go to a matinee performance and I really enjoy it and so of the evening, let's have dinner here. So we go to the restaurant. And there's also 20 hotel rooms and I'm in the bridal party and the bridal party stays at the hotel. So there's another small incremental reduction for that. Then the next one is that not all of the events start and not all of the events finish at the same time. So you don't have all of the traffic activity going in and going out in the peak hour, they're kind of spread around. And that's equally true for Hudson Valley. Because for me, part of the charm of Hudson Valley is is to go up and enjoy the experience on the lawn. And so the lawns open two hours before the event and some people get there even before it opens. And some people get there shortly after it opens and then other people have other stuff to do and they get there later. So all of those things, the 2.5, the 1.5 for staff, the buses for the banquet, the employees that live on site, the people who go to the restaurants in Hudson Valley, the events not starting at the same time, that's how you get from 1100 people down to 329.
Right. But so, John, let me just, I'm going to push a couple more times because this is what I have to do. So if you have 1200 people or even your 1096, pick your number. You divide that by, and I'm looking at using this sheet of your firm.
Yes.
And it has, and you know, everyone has to enter and everyone has to exit. It's so
Yes.
Right? So if you take even using your cumulative of 329, you divide it by 1200. It ain't anywhere near 1.5 to 2.5. You got to have a lot of buses to get that number to be that.
But but your assumption, Mr. Chairman, because this is the peak hour of travel, right? Your assumption is all 1200 people arrive or depart in an hour. They absolutely don't.
Understood, but this is this is meant to be. So let's get, let's just talk about Saturday PM.
Yes.
You've got a wedding.
Yes.
You've got an indoor theater, you've got the outdoor theater. You've got the people coming in and out of the houses, going out to dinner or whatever they're doing. And most of the number here is sitting in the theater. The theater number, which they all should be basically coming and going at the same time, has 208 exits for 825 people. You add the 530 outdoor and the 295 indoor, you get 825.
Yeah.
That has 208 exits. That is a ratio that's pretty close to four to one.
Yep.
And so I don't see how you're getting a four to one ratio when you just told me it was two and a half people in the car. So now maybe it's because, again, I'm trying to understand this, this says additional trips. You guys keep using the word additional. So maybe it's on top of something else that I don't understand you're doing. But I don't get the math of get, again, I hear, I totally understand the logic you've said. And it's very clear that you cite the logic along the way and I get it. I think you're missing some, like this chart doesn't have any of the workers in it. There are no workers in this chart cited, it's only the guests, for example. But let's leave that aside. There are none of the workers that you have in your I chart, I would call it, are on this chart. So I don't know where the workers are driving.
Well, so the workers are baked in to those numbers.
Okay.
And for Hudson Valley, the workers don't leave when the guests leave, the workers leave after the guests leave. And typically, for most performances, that they're not the same length. So usually one might be two hours, another might be 90 minutes. So they'd be spread out a little bit. So that's kind of how we got to.
Yeah, I I'm just, I'm just going to tell you that the basic math of about 825 people, I'm just looking at the theater row, right? I'm just doing the theater row.
Yeah.
825 guests at the theater with only 208 exits tells me you got a four to one ratio. And again, if you think you're including all the workers, great. But I don't see how you're getting there. And I I think there is some math to be shown to further explain how you're coming up with. Because I my, again, maybe it's this additional thing, as I've mentioned a couple of times. But I, my estimation, even using your 2.2 or even three, divide that by 1200 as a maximum, because I'm worrying about the maximum or even 1100. I'm coming up with something like 400 cars. And so I just, that to me is helpful to see and understand how you're getting that down. And that's, that's basically the sum total what I want to talk about. Because I noticed that in your I chart, you have much more granularity about the workers, about a bunch of other stuff. Every worker numbers, this does not itemize it. And I can't follow how you're getting only 225 exits. Because again, my big concern, I've said this many times, is those people pouring out at 11 o'clock on a Saturday night with a few hundred cars. And what's the impact to traffic? What's the impact to light pollution? What's the impact to noise? It's all that same topic I have, and I have been transparent about that for quite some time.
Yep. Mr. Chairman, can I confirm, is there a table number at the top of that?
So this thing I'm showing?
Yes.
This is table number six, additional project site trips, page 56.
Table six.
Page 56, exactly.
I'm obviously not going to answer it right now.
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm just trying to understand it because I, trust me, I have spent a lot of time poring through your very thoughtful work. And so for me, footing the numbers exactly as I tell the associates who work for me, show me the math because I don't, I need to see it footing.
And should we just, can we, may we just focus on one particular hour? And if we can explain that, I can, I can explain them all, but you know, if I can explain one of them to you, maybe you'll be satisfied that the others are okay, or do you want me to do them all?
Well, I, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna want to understand them. So I'm happy to have you do, take us through a bit, but also mindful that I will, we also want to talk about these other pieces. So I'm happy to have a separate conversation on it if you want to have a, because I think there's a, I think there's a table you're going to need to write that makes it more clear.
What I want to do is prepare another table with more detail and more granularity. But I guess my question is, I'm trying to minimize the labor involved. And would it be acceptable to look at the Saturday midday hour and Saturday PM hour if you want all three hours?
I know, I, I personally think that's a great question. My, my personal view, others may have a different view. Understanding the Saturday PM, I think, is the, is the, is the hour of maximum danger, if you will. To quote whomever said that, I don't know which, yes, Laura, go ahead, please.
So can I just suggest, because I think, you know, to combine what Neil's looking for and what we were, what we're asking and John to just simplify. Because I do understand what you're saying, there's ebbs and flows of the way that the traffic pattern comes and goes out of the site. And you can't necessarily capture it in like one time slot. So is it more of a bar chart showing like the day, right? So if the day starts at 7:00 AM where people ebb and flow, showing what that traffic pattern is in a number, right? And then showing how that peaks at what point, and then how it diminishes back down, right? So that we understand exactly the flow of the traffic on a single day. And let's just call it Saturday, right? So Saturday morning through Saturday night, right? First shift per car, per traffic pattern, capture that in one snapshot.
Okay, that actually seems like a pretty
Excellent. And but I wanted the math explained. And then let me add one last thing, which is I'm looking for the absolute number of cars. I, I don't know if embedded in this term additional meant that there's, it's incremental to some other level of traffic that may have already been at Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival down at 9D.
Yeah.
But but we're looking as to build on Laura's point, the absolute number, not some incremental number off some current view that someone has somewhere else.
Yep.
Oh, I think if, I think that what John has to do is agree on some formula with AKRF's traffic, Mr. Old, as to how that metric should be developed. Because we can agree that there aren't 825 cars going out at one time, right? The max. We can agree on that part. So that, how do we get to the number, what supports John's number?
Yeah, look, there's 12, 1200, he's positing there's 1200 human beings maximum at one time. And understanding how you get, so you're right, there's not 1200 cars because there's not one person per car.
Right.
So we, we got that. So what is the, what is the right number and explain? I love Laura's suggestion because seeing it on a time series would be very helpful. Go ahead, John.
Yeah, so I, I would just add that what we have evaluated for the traffic is the 90th percentile. In fact, it might even be the 93rd percentile, the standard engineering evaluations be 85th percentile. But we know that this is an issue, so we went to the 90th percentile. So there, I'm not going from memory, there's 530 seats in the tent. There's 225 in the indoor theater. We postulated that on the, at the 90th percentile, there would be probably 513 of the 530 seats will be sold in the tent. And that there will be 213 of the 225 seats sold in the in the indoor theater. We did assume 200 guests. I know that for fact in the, in the banquet, which is a maximum number. And I think we did, I don't know, we did some number of probably 90% of the restaurants. So basically what I'm saying is we didn't do the 1211 number.
No, it's fine. John, that makes a lot of sense. I'm not quibbling on that. What I'm talking about is
And I do understand your absolute, not on top of anything else.
Right, because let me just give you the example you were just giving. When you look at the theater, and by the way, this version says there's 295 seats in the theater, not 225 seats, just to be clear.
That's a typo. I called that, that's a typo.
But if you look at it, it says only 78 cars are entering for the PM. Now, there's 825 people and there's only 78 cars entering. That's 10 people per car and that's a lot, that's a big car.
Yeah, but Mr. Chairman, the, the end of the show and the beginning of the next show are separated by like two hours. So if you, I mean.
But I'm saying, but yeah, but if they're all, but using your point, 90th percentile, if whatever, 513 or the 5, they're going to come fill in for the evening show, right? They're all going to come in for the evening show.
Yeah.
And there's also an evening indoor show, yes?
Yeah, yeah.
So we're going to have 825 potential seats in those two theaters for the PM show. So that means there's 825 viewers and there's only 78 cars entering.
But Mr. Chairman, it's not 825, it's not, it's 760. 760, but, 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 Mr. Chairman, this, I'm sorry, go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm gonna say, yeah, let's just use your number, 780. If there's 780 people coming to see the show, yes? Right? It says here, there's only 78 cars entering. By the way, I have to note something, Mr. Woodell, I have been in professional life for 30 years, which is I started, I graduated college in 1992. And I know there was an era where people were all in these smoking rooms and madmen. I have never actually been in a professional meeting in my entire life that ever had anyone smoking. It is so cool to see a guy smoke in a pipe. I just want to note the uniqueness, especially for those young people out there watching this. This is like a special opportunity. This is amazing. What, what brand of tobacco are you using, sir?
I, I appreciate that. I feel like a bit of an anachronism, but I, I think a lot of my life is like that. At the moment, moment I'm speaking, smoking a mixture from Boston called Cuban Mixture. It's kind of a halfway cigar, halfway pipe tobacco. Thank you for
That's awesome. Sorry, John, that little interlude.
Yeah, as a public service announcement, just in case there might be a stray young person watching, don't smoke, please.
Thank you, John. I was just gonna say that.
I guarantee this is going to be the only public meeting in America today that someone is smoking on camera.
Need to be fair and balanced here, Neil.
Mr. Chairman, just, just, just to get, wrap this up, I do think that Ms. O'Connell's suggestion that we show the whole day so you can see each hour, where, where the 78 are, why there's not more. So I think her suggestion will help me explain to you
Right.
what you want to understand.
And again, absolute numbers, not, not some incremental number, please.
Yep.
Okay. All right, good. Thank you for that. Thanks for your help on that. Any other pieces on traffic? Okay, all right, let's, let's move to, I'm sorry, to Jay Noise, please, over you. Dan, Dan or John, Yon, whoever wants to talk.
Yon. Are you on?
I was just, I'm sorry, I was muted. I was just going to walk the board through, through the noise section. Sound Arts provided an acoustical study that was prepared in compliance with the scope outline that the board approved. It's included in appendix I of the EAF. The study provides an analysis of the noise from multiple sources to receptor points that were agreed upon with the board and they're illustrated on an exhibit in the EAF, you know, surrounding the perimeter of the property where the board asked us to evaluate noise. We did evaluate the town code as it relates to noise to determine the town's noise requirements. The study estimates new sound levels that would be associated with the planned development and operations of the site. And also evaluates noise associated with construction. Ambient noise, noise levels were determined by taking noise measurements around the property perimeter on four different days between May 23rd and July 11th, and again in August. Noise measurements were taken at the six different locations as illustrated on that exhibit and as agreed upon with the board. Receiver number three has been determined by the team to be the most critical location, given its low ambient noise level. The proposed noise sources will be mostly seasonal in the summer and the fall months during the outdoor performances and outdoor private events that would generate noise. And the study identifies what those noise sources would be from, including performances at the tents, audience gatherings at concession stands, concession areas, weddings and events, use of the pavilion and activities within enclosed buildings such as the indoor theater. When comparing the ambient noise levels to the code limitations, as well as the proposed condition, the study found that nearly all the sound levels in the proposed condition would be, meet the code requirement with one exception at receiver three, which has been determined to be minor and can be easily mitigated. At receiver number three, there's a slight exceedance of the code requirement where the sound levels exceed the requirement by 5.3 decibels. Shakespeare Festival is committed to reducing the succeedence to a code compliant level through design strategies. And these strategies may include, but are not limited to modifying the design of the tent, incorporating barriers and berms and/or the strategic placement of the sound system. The design team will ensure that the selected mitigation strategy will result in in code compliance at all locations, including during simultaneous events. Receiver three was the only location where there was any sort of exceedance. This is the only impact we identified. And the mitigation is what I just spoke about earlier through those one of several different types of mitigation strategies that we identified in the EAF. And if there's any specific noise related questions, Joma Solar is here from Sound Arts.
Uh, let's just get the KRF or Ron, make any comments. Uh, let's just get the KRF or Ron, make any comments.
Um, this is Aaron, make sure if if it's possible for. John, if you could pull up the receptor map, or someone can share it.
I could, I could get it up. Just give me a minute. Almost there.
Can I? I'm just gonna redress one question of fact that came into the chat. Someone asked, where is receptor three? I believe receptor three is behind that greenhouse on the straightaway in uh on Snake Hill. Is that correct, Chip?
Yeah, Joma.
Yeah, let me share. Okay.
I got it. Okay, there's, there's.
Thank you. There you go. Thank you.
So those are the six locations and three was the critical, critical location where there was a slight exceedance.
Good. Yeah, so that exceedance based on your code is if you have five decibels above the ambient measurement. Um, at the property line, that's an issue. So what Yan was pointing out at receptor three, it's pretty quiet currently. The ambient condition is pretty low. Um, and they determined with the modeling that they would get it that right about that five decibel over ambient um situation at that location. So. Um, they've proposed, or they're willing, they're committed to addressing it with design measures that would come about. They've outlined a few of them in the EAF. They modeled them all. I think they've. Studied all of them. They just haven't really committed to a specific one until I guess the site plan approval stage, but they have options identified to limit that noise going in that direction from the tent. Um, I also understand, you know, John may can can take it over and talk more, but. Um, you know, I think they they looked at amplified sound and non-amplified sound from the tent. Um, not all performances in the tent are going to be amplified. Some of them, you know, it's more intimate setting. It's a small venue. You know, and and all the the route nine points are right now impacted by existing ambient levels of traffic and with. The distance the tent is from route nine, it really doesn't exacerbate um that condition at all. So, you know, I think, you know, we've reviewed it a few times. We went back and forth and had some comments that were addressed. Um, you know, we're in agreement that, uh, you know, what they can do to address number three. Seems doable and would probably be more refined at the at the site plan level. Um, but they do have the options identified to address that. And I guess, you know, John may can take it over if you want to get more granular and and some of the technical aspects of how you did this. Um, but you know, we didn't have any, uh, we didn't see any concerns. It met the standard that was out of part three scope.
Yes, just a minor comment about these exceedance, these five decibels of exceedance of location three. It's only happening at night. And it's only happening for amplified events at the tent. And those represent about one percent of the events that that will happen there. So so it's 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 pretty minor, but it can happen. So. Um, just five decibels uh at night for amplified events. That's, I think that's an important comment. Any other event at the ten, a regular event, an amplified event will not create any issues at location three. And obviously will not create any any issues at any other of the receivers around the around the site. I think that this table, you can all see the table. I think that it's it's. It shows very clearly uh what is happening at location three. You can see the noise levels of different receivers. And these are the minimums that we measure. We measure several times at each location and this table shows the lowest of the lowest. And so the worst case scenario, you can see location one, we we measure sixty three decibels at night. That's when the noise levels, the ambient noise levels are the lowest. Um, so that's fairly high. That's that's because of the route nine. Location two, uh, it's on Snake Hill Road. We measure fifty three decibels at night. Location three, we measure thirty three. So it's extremely, extremely quiet. So twenty decibels lower than than location two. Location four forty nine, location five forty five. And location six, again, on on route nine sixty four. So um. There is a this exceedance of location three because the ambience not noise level at night is extremely, extremely low.
Okay, anything else from you guys? Aaron?
I think that's really it. I mean, they did a pretty detailed model. Um, you know, you could review the the report. Let's see the appendix, plus what's in the EAF. Um, I think they even have, I think the next page shows kind of how they. Model things, um, you know, with the contour showing. Emanating from the tent, from the source. Um, you know, so we've, we've looked at all that. We look at the inputs and and all the appendices and pretty thoroughly. Um, and we didn't really come away with uh any impact here. I think the way they're, you know, how they cited the tent on. Um, you know, it's right in the middle. It's far away from 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 these receptors as possible. Um, and you know, it's not a lot of concert venue with the glad music playing. It's. You know, amplified and non-amplified performances, um, you know, plays and such. Uh, I think they've done a good job of showing uh the worst case scenario here.
Okay, all right, board member questions? Heidi, go ahead, please.
Um, does the sound impact not include the sound of the cars at the site? I couldn't make out whether that's included or not, or it's just the actual. Uh, the, you know, performance areas or.
We did look at traffic as well. So so those five decibels were operational noises. But we look at traffic, at the traffic increases due to additional traffic. And at all locations is less than three decibels above. Um, what we have right now. So it's it's a it's a minor increase acoustically.
Other questions? Okay, so so sorry, sir, again, how do you pronounce your name, first name?
Uh, Joma.
Joma, thank you. So Joma, I'm gonna just ask a little, ask Heidi's question in a different way, because I I can't follow. How you quantified the impact of the cars leaving. Again, I'm gonna go back to my same witching hour point, which is. Eight hundred and twenty five people leaving the theater at the same time-ish. Let's assume the show was the same length and the same time they leave. How can you, where can you point me in your study so I can understand going from no cars at eleven o'clock at night or ten thirty, or whatever time it ends to. Eight hundred and twenty five people leaving, because that's there's zero currently, or maybe if a wedding goes quite late. But how to help me show where you go from zero to the number of car, the number of cars that will be there? How do you show where the increase in noise comes from? Where's that analysis come from? How do you account for it? Is it? Them idling, is them honking their horns? Hey, get it, move away, boom, you know? What, where are you getting the noise from all the cars that are leaving? Because I I couldn't follow where. Where it comes from either in the the body of the document, page ninety one. I'm looking at where it says it's very low and it's unnoticed, too tolerable, and I couldn't follow it in your. Uh, detailed report. And it's, I'm sure it's me not being able to figure out how you connected the number of cars. To the volume of noise. Could you just give us a little more clarity about how you did that and where it comes from?
Yeah, so so I I use the numbers of the. The the traffic without the project, the site, the estimated traffic. Uh, five, ten, ten years on the road, whenever it makes sense. So we had that number without the project. And I had the number of cars with the project. Uh, based on that, you have an increment of, obviously with the project, we'll have more cars. So there is an increment in number of cars. Acoustically, you can estimate the increase in noise level during the ten logarithmic. Of the the increase in number of cars. So that's 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 how you calculate that increase. So you look at the. Uh, the percentage increase and then you do the 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 ten log of that number. And with that, you obtain how many decibels you will be increasing the noise level.
So, uh, not really, to tell you the truth, but let's assume you have your black box and it spits out the number. Can you give us a number of cars that would be? Such that there would be something meaningful in noise creation? Because you describe it as being, quote. Again, I'm on page fifty, ninety one, sorry, in your increased noise and traffic, and it says, as noted, blah, 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 nice deck. Uh, this noise increase is perceived as unnoticed, tolerable, and should have no appreciable effect on receptors. So what is a volume where that would be? Appreciable impact on receptors.
More than five decibels would be definitely.
I'm I'm trying to get that converted into a number of cars. Like if there were three thousand cars leaving at the same time, would that be enough to cause some noise impact? Like, what's the number of cars? If you can help me, please?
I mean, it it depends. I mean, if we go from three thousand to six thousand cars, let's say, I mean, I know that that's not the number. But we are doubling the number of cars. That would represent a three decibel increase in noise.
Each decibel is a thousand cars, is what you're saying?
No, 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 it's a logarithmic scale, and you need to look at the ratio. So. So if you go from three thousand to six thousand, so that's. Twice. So ten log of two, that's three decibels. So that's that's where it's, the number is coming from. So you, if you have a hundred cars. Um, if you go from a hundred to two hundred, you would, you would have the same three decibel increase.
So can I have a sense of how many cars you guys are estimating are currently coming out at late at night on a Friday, a Friday or Saturday night versus how many you think it will be? Because I'm guessing it feels like more than just a two X increase in the number of cars leaving, in my opinion. From the math you're sharing, it seems like a much more than two X. We're going from a golf course with a wedding venue to a. You know, eight hundred and twenty five people plus the wedding leaving, and that sounds like more than double.
Yeah, I mean, if you look at the at the study, we are looking at the at the peak hours. So that's where where when we studied. How much, how many decibels we would be changing, because that's that's when the 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 ambient noise level from the traffic will be the highest. So we we looked at the peak. Um, let me look at the the exact times in the report. Hold on.
Joma, what sort of a noise would generate an increase of five decibels, translated into something all the non-engineering types can understand?
So ten decibels would be twice as loud. So so you have a ten decibel increase. The perception. Subjective would be that the noise is twice as loud.
But what what makes ten decibels worth of sound? That's my question. What noise? A cough, a dog barking, you know, what? What is a ten decibel sound?
We are talking about uh. An increase of ten decibels. We are not talking about ten decibels of noise. We're talking about going from sixty to seventy. Does it make sense? So we're not talking about that ten decibels uh of noise. We're talking about an increase from going from sixty to seventy or going from forty to fifty.
What I'm trying to understand in my own head is what? Just of, if there were a noise generated other than traffic of ten decibels, what kind of a noise? Creates ten decibels of sound so that people can relate to that from their common everyday experience? Dog barking, baby crying, you know, if if.
I mean, sixty, to have a sense, sixty decibels is the level of a a normal conversation. So you have. A couple of people talking that they generate the level of sixty decibels that without amplification. That's that's a typical level of a a normal. Without raising your voice uh conversation. So that to have a sense, that would be sixty decibels. Uh, uh, an environment that is very quiet, as we saw in the study. Would give you like thirty decibels. That's extremely, extremely quiet. In in New York City, in the street, you can have like seventy, seventy two decibels. In the subway. Uh, you can go up at two ninety, ninety five decibels. So so this is a little bit of a range of.
May I just put my two cents in here for a second? I think that 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 the scale of the thing needs needs to be explained a little, and I think I understand it, but I'll be happy to correct it. So if you started with that hundred cars. And you added a hundred, you'd be increasing it three decimal. But then you start at two hundred, you add another two hundred, you'd be increasing it by three decibels. So so and then, and if you have. Four hundred and you increased it by four hundred, it'd be increasing it by three decibels. So it's not, it's not a straight line thing at all. It's a very, it it is relative to the.
Right, right, Glenn. So if it's a doubling, right. So I'm trying to get is that the baseline cars, I'm making this up, is a hundred. And we're gonna go to three hundred cars. I'm just doing simple numbers. That's a three X increase. And so what would that be, Jiao Mai, if you had a three X increase? How is that three decibels? It's six decibels now?
Four point seven.
Four point seven decibels. Okay. So I'd just like to know, we get back, it's almost comes back to John, like what was your starting number of cars and was your ending number of cars? So I can understand whether, because back and then back to. Uh, Dan's point, I just don't know if a four point seven decibel increase is something anyone notices or not. If our applicants are saying, of our advisor saying four point seven, no one's gonna notice. That's very helpful to me.
So we have these numbers in the report, in the acoustic report, this page thirteen of seventy nine. Um, for example, um. Route nine, we're going from. Fourteen hundred eighty four cars to fifteen hundred forty eight cars, and that would be on Friday's PM peak hour. So there is, there are a few tables that that include all the numbers. And I discussed these numbers, like these these numbers with with John. Obviously, so they show the the estimate with bill condition and the no bill condition.
Give me a question. Go ahead.
Yeah, so I'm curious about what constitutes a car. You know, because I imagine that, you know, say, five, six years from now, we're gonna have a lot of electric cars. Which are theoretically quieter. I'm wondering if the engineering, this is just a random question, but if the engineering standards are already including electric cars. Or if it's, you know, a dog.
They are not.
Yeah. Thank you.
And you're correct. I mean, levels should go down with electric cars. That's correct.
And one of the things I'm hoping for in general.
The, sorry about that. Whether four point seven is significant or a large increase. I mean, your code doesn't allow more than five. Um, at a property. So I, you know, I would use five as the. You know, you know, the threshold here to.
Yeah.
For your code purposes.
So Steve, what, thank you. That's very helpful. So Steve, just back to this point on page, oh, go ahead. Who's who's saying?
The important thing is that we're below the code requirement or the code maximum. That that's the important point, I think, that the four point seven is below five.
Yeah, it it, which is why on page thirteen, uh, it compares the bill to the the PDD, it says. Uh, which was a theoretical, I mean, it's an approval, obviously, but it's a theoretical volume of noise, because a lot of that stuff wasn't built. So. Can you help us understand then what is the absolute increase in noise? It's still four point seven or is something different? You go the absolute change.
Yeah, so page thirteen shows the 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 numbers that we use in the calculations, the number of cars and the increase. And then if you go down the report, you need to go down to page thirty. Uh, that table. Shows the increase in decibels. So for example, for. The PM peak hour, uh, along route nine, we're talking about increases between zero decibels and zero point two decibel. the PM peak hour, uh, along Route nine, we're talking about increases between zero decibels and zero point two decibel. So it's, it's almost no increase. Um, at midday peak hour, we go from zero point one decibels to zero point three decibels. So really, really small increase. And then the PM peak hour, we go from zero point two to zero point six decibel. So again, very small increases.
Although, just there's a point six here in the far bottom left column.
Zero point six.
Yeah. Oh, that's not six, that's point six decibels. Fine.
Yeah, point six, yes.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you. Okay, let's move on to K.
Hey Neil, can I just ask one quick?
Yeah, Heidi, go ahead, please.
At receptor, is a receptor two, the entrance on Snake Hill, an exit?
Yes, it's, it's close to that location. Yeah.
So I, I, I get your point about the decibels and all, um, although it's somewhat, I mean, you just have to satisfy the code, I guess, but, but, uh, I, it doesn't have a lot of, uh, it's not terribly intuitive. But at receptor two, um, isn't the difference that it's gonna sound like a highway, right? Or, or is it not? Because is it, like, obviously, if you stand next to nine, it's very noisy for any normal person.
Yeah.
You know, it's disturbingly noisy. Um, so now will receptor two uh, be noisy like kind of, obviously not as noisy as nine? But will it be much noisier than it is now because you have all these cars going in and out and out? Or is it not gonna be so noisy like that because the cars are, are slowing down and, and kind of uh, idling or, you know, like, is it gonna sound like a highway now at two?
Will not.
Two or, or?
Will not. It will not. And you're correct. I mean, the, the, the noise depends on the number of cars, but also it depends on the, the speed. So if you go very slowly, you have lower levels. If you go at sixty miles per hour, the levels are significantly higher. So, so you have both things happening here. And at location two, you have a little bit of noise, uh, traffic noise from Snake Hill Road. And you can also hear Route nine from, from receiver two. So, so you get also all that noise coming from, from Route nine that's still uh, traveling down Snake Hill Road and impacting that location. So.
Okay, thanks.
And I think if you, unless I'm wrong about this, but the table in the EAF that shows ambient levels at night, um, obviously one is Route nine, it's the highest, two uh, is about fifty-three, and then three where the, um, where you go further down Snake Hill, it's twenty decibels less than two. So it goes down as you, you know, the distance from nine increases. And also you're, you're gonna have slower speeds on Snake Hill. You're gonna have that traffic signal also at the intersection with nine, um, with cars coming off of that to enter the site at a lower speed.
Yes, and, and I, I would like to mention that location three is far away from a Snake Hill Road. It's in the middle of, of nowhere. So that's why it's so, so low. You have basically a hill that is blocking the noise from Route nine. So you cannot hear Route nine because there is a big hill between you and Route nine. And Snake Hill Road is, is quite far away. So, so, um, location four, for example, it's, that location is closer to Route uh, to Snake Hill Road. And you can, you can see that the levels go up at that location because at, at that point you get, there is not a lot of traffic, but there is traffic on the Snake Hill Road. And then the levels go up. But the location three, you're far away from both. And, and that's why so, it's so quiet. Um, by the way, we did an additional measurement. I don't know if you saw that in the report in August, that location three. Um, and what happens in late July and August is that you get all the cicadas. So the ambient noise levels at night gets extremely, extremely loud. At location three, it gets like, I don't remember the number, but it was above fifty decibels. So, uh, obviously, um, uh, those nights in the summer, you will not be able to hear. And, and if there is an amplified event at the ten, you will not be able to hear because the cicadas are so extremely loud that you will not be able to hear that. But again, in this study, we, we use the worst case scenario, the lowest ambient noise level that we were, that we measured between May and, and July. So that's, that's what we used and, and that's what we are discussing.
Other questions? Peter?
Um, I was just wondering if there were some really established effective and, and even proven, uh, kind of noise abatement measures that, uh, that have been deployed throughout and have really worked in a situation like this. I know very little about this, but from my wife's restaurant and trying to bring the noise level down inside there, it was and is, um, extremely difficult. Uh, I don't see how a berm is going to, to really make a difference in terms of, uh, the amount of noise that is generated. And I don't, and I'd hate to see that you'd have to turn down the volume of the audio system within the tent to, uh, to, to reach that uh, decibel level. And plus, um, the, the number three, the, I, the, the receptor number three, there are three houses right there, uh, on that curve. And so they're gonna be affected, um, you know, mightily. I guess, let's go back a little bit. Let's not take me too much time or. Is there really something that we can turn to, to say, yeah, yeah, we can, we can bring down the noise and not, uh, compromise the performance? Um, and, and feel confident about that?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Uh, five decibels, uh, if we're talking about attenuating five decibels outdoors is extremely easy. If we were talking about twenty decibels, I would be really concerned about it. And I would be suggesting reducing the noise levels. But five decibels is something that uh, you can achieve very easily with many things. You can achieve it probably with the, the same fabric of the ten can achieve that. I mean, there is no selection of the material yet, but, but if it has a little bit of mass, it can provide those, those decibels of attenuation. Um, a barrier can achieve easily ten, fifteen decibels of attenuation. A berm as well. It needs to be placed at the right location. So it blocks the line of sight from the so, sound source to the receiver. But five decibels is something that is really, really easy to achieve. Uh, so I'm not, I'm not concerned that that will be a challenge to, to, to meet. I mean, uh, in this case, it's, it's something that is really, really easy to achieve.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Just remind the board that, you know, we, we evaluated the six locations that you asked us to evaluate. All of them, you know, comparing the ambient noise level at, you know, nighttime. Um, and then inserting our proposed, um, noise from, from onsite activities and performances in every single location except for three. Receiver three, we were code compliant. And receiver three, uh, you know, is a very minor exceedance, which we've identified. We can, can be very easily mitigated. And we gave three different, um, scenarios or, or mitigation measures. Um, the noise analysis has been reviewed by your consultant. Um, we've responded to their comments. They've indicated that there's no impact. Um, I understand that the board has some concerns or may uh, request some additional information with regards to, to, uh, traffic. Um, and we're happy to do that. But, um, I think we, we understand that what we have to do and be happy to move on if you think that's appropriate.
Yeah. And then the, and the noise le- levels that we're looking at that table, they are measurements that we did like really late at night. So staying there between nine and, and eleven and midnight. So those levels are not at five PM. Those levels are yeah, at, at the moment that it gets really, really quiet at the site. So, and again, the, we use the lowest levels that we measured during those four or five nights that we were there. So it's the lowest, the worst case scenario, that's what we, we included in the report.
All right, let's go on to K, please. Um, cultural resources. And, 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 and by the way, if the, if the applicant doesn't have much to say, uh, don't, don't feel obliged to say, say a lot. Um, I guess being mindful that it's eight forty. So, uh, K, cultural resources.
The, the long and short of it, um, Mr. Chairman, is that we, we don't have any, um, listed resources uh, on the property. Um, we've consulted with Shippo and we have a letter of no effect from Shippo, which is included in the, in the, in the packet.
Anything from AK or?
No, I'll just note that that consultation with Shippo is, you know, a secret requirement. And, um, they looked at the same materials you've seen as far as the plan and, and all the uses and what's, what's around it. Um, and they've provided that letter of no effect, both for structures and archaeology issues, you know, because it's gonna be ground disturbance. So.
Board member questions? Okay, seeing none, uh, let's move to L, open space and recreation.
Um, yeah, this chapter provides a description of the open space conservation recreational aspects of the project, both public and private, and our proposed land use controls. Um, as you know, the, the project will result in, uh, seventy-three point seven acres of land being conveyed to the Hudson Highlands Land Trust for permanent preservation. Uh, that includes seventeen point one acres of Lot One and fifty-six point six acres, uh, which we've been referred to as the Western Parcels on the other side of Snake Hill Road. In addition, uh, the Shakespeare Festival parcel, the ninety-seven port for acres will be restricted by recorded conservation declaration, which will restrict the future use of the property um, to use as customary to performing arts and entertainment. The document goes into, um, the use of the conserved lands, uh, that they'll be open to the, to the public of those that are, are gonna be um, conveyed to the land trust and, and those, uh, to be retained by Shakespeare Festival. Um, and, you know, we make the point that there is no impact. There's only a positive impact when it comes to open space and recreation uh, resulting from this project. And our position is that there is no impact and no mitigation is required beyond, uh, which has been included in the proposed action.
AKRF, anything to add?
No, I think that really sums it up. It's currently, it's an open space. It's a recreational resource currently, but it's private. Um, it's not a public park. And, uh, you know, part of this proposal is to set aside a significant amount of acreage for conservation and recreation purposes to be further refined with the land trust, you know, as they come up with the allowed uses. But the idea is, um, they're creating an open space resource here.
Board members' questions? Peter, go ahead, please.
Very short. Um, um, page, I'm sorry, I'm in, uh, I'm in the revised October, page forty, uh, forty, forty-six. Um, it says, public use by means of passive recreation use will be defined by HHLT after transference of land. Um, it seems a little bit cart before the horse. Uh, be nice to know what, what HHLT, um, considers public use, uh, at this point. I'd, I'd like a little bit more, uh, a sense of, uh, what they infusion people using this land, uh, uh, in a public way. So that's all I have to say.
The, uh, the earlier version, the September version provided, um, um, kind of a recap of an interview that we had with the director of the land trust. Obviously, they don't, you know, they don't own the land now. They have some ideas of how they want it to be used. And, you know, we described their initial, um, their initial thoughts, uh, in text in the September version. They, they, I think, intend on doing a lot of public outreach, um, once they, they have the land, uh, to determine exactly how it's going to be used. Um, but it, you know, it's, it's gonna be open to the public, um, via trails. And, you know, that, they didn't provide a whole lot of more information beyond that, just because they, they don't know. Um, but it certainly will be open to the public for passive recreation, things that you might imagine, walking, hiking, bird watching, that, that type of thing.
Okay, thank you.
And other board members' questions? Okay, I don't see any. Let's move on to, uh, M, construction then.
Yep, um, fairly short chapter. Uh, we, we get into the discussion of our phasing plan, both phase one and the full, uh, campus build out. Uh, the impacts that are evaluated, um, are, are mainly, uh, temporary construction impacts, construction traffic, construction noise, dust, soil erosion. Um, these are temporary unavoidable impacts. They're gonna be mitigated by, um, compliance with your local statutes, uh, state regulations and implementation of our SWIP.
AKRF or Ron?
Um, defer to Ron on most of it, but I think, you know, what they've outlined, the SWIP and project component to address construction. Um, you know, the, the rest of the issues with regard to traffic and noise, dust, that's temporary. Um, they do have, they do cite the code, uh, requirements for construction hours that they would abide by. Um, they've also, you know, the size of the site and the distance from construction activity to the receptors identified is pretty large. Um, and there's, you know, it's a large site and there's plenty of room to stage vehicles and, and and, and the like. So, um, but, you know, if Ron has anything to add, I, that's all I have.
Uh, the, um, counter like regulations will, will govern, uh, or control the construction activities uh, while they exist. Uh, we previously talked about the issue with the SWIP document. Uh, that's still warrant some further review, uh, that we're trying to tie down with the applicant's consultant. But in the end, the, uh, SWIP will comply with state standards. So I'd have nothing to add on construction.
Just have a quick question on that. How do you, um, propose to implement the phasing requirement? Is that gonna be a note on the plans or how is that going to be, um, something that is binding and enforceable?
The, construction phasing? Is that what you're referring to, Steve? Construction phase?
Yes, construction phasing. You say you're going to phase the construction. Obviously, that's an important consideration in terms of impacts for secret review. But I mean, where, where will it be written that the, the construction's going to be phased?
There, there'll be, for construction purposes and part of the SWIP, um, there'll be a phasing plan. We've committed to not disturbing more than five acres at a time. We've laid out um, the various aspects of the project and, and how we intend on complying with that. That's shown right now in a table form. But, um, when the final SWIP is prepared and approved, there will be a physical plan, plan sheet or multiple plan sheets that illustrate, uh, the phases of construction um, and demonstrate the amount of land disturbance per phase as a requirement of the SWIP. So right now, we, we have that illustrated in, uh, in table form. Um, but the final SWIP will, will have to show it in, uh, illustrative form.
You're gonna be submitting the SWIP before the, uh, the site plan approvals, credit?
Yes, with the site plan, absolutely.
All right. So we could just cross-reference it then?
Correct.
All right.
The other questions or questions from board members, please? Peter, go ahead, please.
Sorry, me again. Um, I had just one question. Um, I know that the, uh, there was just received a wonderful grant, which is gonna make a huge difference, I'm sure, in the life of the festival. But it says, um, you know, it's still, uh, as they say on page, uh, forty-nine, existential period, I mean, for probably for all of theater. But so have any provisions been made for not opening in two thousand twenty-two? Like, if the virus precludes that type of gathering or, um, or some other, something comes up that, uh, that, that keeps, uh, keeps the uh, festival from happening? Is there, is there uh, like I said, a provision that's gonna get them to two thousand twenty-three?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I can address that.
Mr. Chairman, I can address that. Yes, you know, because we went through the experience of two thousand twenty, we had a whole sequence of scenario planning about when was the last time we could make a decision about, um, you know, the safety and viability of a two thousand twenty season. And we had the same, you know, scenario planning for two thousand twenty-one, so, you know, um, as we go through new chapters of, uh, of the virus, you know, we're as hopeful as anyone that will be able to perform in two thousand twenty-two, but we won't do so if it's, um, if it's unsafe for our artists or for our audiences. We're prepared to make the same terrible decision we did in two thousand twenty, and I think all of our colleagues in the theater are making the, the same calculation.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Laura, please.
Sorry, just one quick note. Um, this goes back to, uh, John Canning with your traffic report. So, since we were talking about maximizing, trying to capture the max, right, of what the impact is going to be, you're going to have to overlay the construction traffic as well through the phasing. Because I'm going to assume that you're going to do a phase and then potentially open up a venue, right, have performances, potentially do another phase. And so, in that spectrum of the ebbs and flows, if there's no impact, then it's not an issue, but if there is an impact, just show it just to be safe.
Thank you.
Thank you, or others? Okay, I, I have a, uh, I guess, or related question, well, it's not related, but turn to page fifty in the, uh, the response to AKRF document, uh, in page fifty, in the, I think this is the third paragraph in the page. Starts off with saying, "With the exception of the new driveway proposed off Snake Hill Road, which is located approximately a hundred and fifty feet from the closest residence, blah, 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 blah." So.
You're muted.
Mr. Chairman, I believe you're on mute.
Oh, I'm sorry. Was I muted the whole time?
Yeah.
Oh, God, sorry.
I won't comment.
You can comment, you can comment. Go for it. I don't know. It may be interesting to hear the comment. Um, so, I, I was on page fifty of the response to AKRF document, I apologize. Um, and it talks about the, uh, the new driveway being approximately a hundred and fifty feet from the closest residence. And so while that's not the purpose of the paragraph, it's, it's about the, the earthwork and such. I'd like some guidance because I, you know, we haven't, we did not spend a lot of time uh, on the bridge topic, and I'm not recap, I'm not recapping the bridge topic. We did ask you for a, a drawing at least of what this bridge would look like last time, but I am trying to understand, uh, do you have any sense, and maybe this is for AKRF and Ron, are there any expectations or requirements for a, a new entrance with a bridge of that size being near a residence? Uh, is a hundred and fifty feet a meaningful number? Is that just them stating a fact? Is there some, is there any rules that we should be cognizant of about a construction site of this creating a new entrance, uh, elevated as it is from a residence? Is that a, is there anything that our code covers or anything in secret that we should be mindful of with that information?
Um, I can start. Go ahead, Aaron. Can I start? Okay. Yeah, I was just gonna, you know, pointing to, um, you know, the SEACRA guidance, you know, when, when, uh, we had the last meeting and we talked about the issues of magnitude, importance. Um, you know, one of the ideas about importance that's in the SEACRA guidebook is, you know, how many people are directly affected by an action, right? Um, I think they called out the one hundred and fifty feet is just, this is the closest receptor to that entrance, um, and it's one, one particular residence. Um, there's no threshold about, you know, how close it is being an impact threshold. It's really about how many people are affected um, when you make your judgment about significance. So, I mean, that's really all I can add from a, from a SEACRA point of view.
That's helpful. Thank you. That's right. Thank you. John, did you want to add something?
Only that the access is, will be similar to any other driveway, except that it's on a bridge as opposed to on dry land. There, there is no specific step, unusual thing about it, other than, like, once you get back to the road, it's on the bridge.
Also, the hundred and fifty feet, I think that was, measurement was taken from the property line at the entrance of the driveway to the closest residence, not the bridge itself, but that, that, it's a significant difference, but wanted to point that out.
Helpful, thank you. Okay, uh, barring any more questions, anyone? Go on to, uh, letter N, community services and economy.
So this is a, 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 a joint, uh, chapter here on community services and economy. Uh, it starts out with emergency services. We identify the service providers, which is, uh, Putnam County Sheriff's, New York State Police, Garrison Volunteer Fire Company, and Garrison Volunteer Ambulance Corps. The site is within the, uh, Garrison Union Free School District. Um, we interviewed and met with, um, representatives of both the fire department and the ambulance corps to review the project with them, um, get any concerns that they might have. Kind of minutes of those meetings are, are provided in, um, the document. We've identified for you, uh, what they identified as being concerns and we uh, point by point went through those and identified how they're being addressed and mitigated, uh, through project design. Um, we discussed, um, that, that's really it for, for, um, community services. Uh, we felt that after meeting with the fire department and ambulance corps, we, we've addressed all of their, their concerns and we've documented that i- in the document. Going on to, um, fiscal impacts, uh, we discussed, uh, identified all the applicable taxing jurisdictions, town of Phillips Town, uh, Garrison Fire, Garrison Schools, uh, Putnam County. Um, we identified how much taxes, uh, the property currently generates to those various, uh, taxing jurisdictions, which is collectively, um, a hundred and sixty-five thousand, six hundred and seventy-six dollars, um, per year. As the Shakespeare Festival and the land trust are both tax exempt, not-for-profit agencies, a large percentage of the, of the property will be tax exempt, um, except for lot three, that's going to be the private residence. Um, and portions of the Hudson Valley Shakespeare, uh, Shakespeare, uh, Festival parcel, which would be mainly the banquet hall, the restaurant, no hotel. Those would be for profit and run by their for-profit C Corp subsidiary. Um, so there is going to be a component of that parcel that will be taxable. Um, we, we made some assumptions, um, and we identified or estimated the future assessed value of both the Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival parcel and the residential parcel. And we estimated, um, the future tax revenue from those two sources, um, which is, uh, estimated to be eighty-nine thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven dollars, which is a reduction of seventy-six thousand, uh, one hundred and eighty-nine dollars per year. Do we don't, we don't believe that there's going to be any significant added costs to those taxing jurisdictions because um, the festival currently operates within the town, um, and under many of the same jurisdictions. The project will not result in any schoolchildren, which tends to be the major issue, uh, with students estimating to be, uh, costing about thirty-three thousand dollars, uh, per student. Uh, we did provide an analysis of how many students we thought could, um, result from a residential project on the same parcel, just for comparison purposes. The loss of tax revenue resulting from the project is unavoidable. Um, and it's our position that it's minor in comparison with the amount of land that's going to be permanently preserved, enjoyed by the community.
That's all I have. AKRF?
Um, I think, they, they did what the scope, uh, outlined they would do. They interviewed, um, the providers and got their feedback on the plan. Uh, we didn't really have anything to add much on the taxes. I think it is what it is, um, you know, based on the change in use. Um, and what's proposed. I think it's just something that the town has to understand. Uh, they didn't, um, review any of this with the assessor. I mean, that's, it's not part of her secret requirement that you do that, but, um, you know, that can all be refined further as they go through the process. Um, as far as the assessed value and what the actual taxes would be. But I think this is a good, uh, they did some good assumptions to get what they show here.
Okay, board members' questions?
Hey? Um, I have, I have one, I think, more for Ron and Steve. I ca- did we make a fire department referral?
Yeah, there was a referral that, uh, that went out very early in the process. I don't believe we've ever heard a response, but the referral was made with all related application documents.
So I, I guess the related question, I guess I'm talking through us to the fire department, uh, experts somewhere for purposes of just stating it. I get, clearly, some of these, uh, actions are already captured at, at, uh, Bosque Bell. Some of these are going to be new additional actions. I, I sa- I looked from the report, it's a lot of discussion about the management of, uh, you know, the usual, can we get our trucks in, that stuff, but I, I just don't have a sense from the fire department's perspective, and I would be interested in about their capacity to handle the incremental activity going on. I assume you're not, I don't know if, I can't remember your plan, if you have a proposal for additional emergency services on staff that you would have. You know, God forbid, people get injured on the, at the event. There's a lot of people there, obviously. I just don't know if the fire department has a viewpoint about whether they have the resources to support this level of activity.
I can only say that we've, we've met with them, um, I think, uh, on more than one occasion, and, and that has not, of, of the many things that came up um, and are identified on page one oh one of the September submission. Um, that was not one of them. There isn't, or any sort of indication that they were not going to be able to provide the service that they, they provide now, um, to the facility.
I, I did, Chip Alaman and I did meet with them, and I met with them a second time and, and virtually, I believe that we've incorporated every one of their um, suggestions, and, and there was never a suggestion that they couldn't handle the, handle the, the problem, and some of the things that are, I guess they're listed, I'm, I'm not able to look at that right now, but, uh, you know, we adjusted the curvature of the road to make it so it would work. We, um, uh, we're planning a, a system of pipes that will, will allow them to get water to any site that they need on, on the project. We, we've, um, we left open, uh, the northwestern entrance at their specific request. So, um, it was a very productive meeting. They do have, you know, allied companies, the mutual aid system that the fire company uses is, it, uh, all all thought about and, and, uh, you know, they're very, they, they were very thorough in their, in their, um, list of things that they thought would help. Um, they were very careful to say these are suggestions and, and, um, and we tried to incorporate, I think we incorporated every one of them. I could be wrong, but I think it's every one of them's there.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I just also wanted to reflect that, um, the Shakespeare Festival is a part of our staff training. Even currently at Bosque Bell and in the future, we have regular CPR and first aid training for the majority, or almost all of our staff on site. Um, we continue to do so as well as emergency management training, and I know that Chip and the staff at the Garrison have similar training for their staff in case of emergencies, so that would be supplementary to the work that we do on site, and we have regular communication with the sheriff's department, uh, every summer.
Very, very helpful. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, barring, uh, we'll move on to the last chapter, human health and site assessment.
Chairman, I'm going to ask Scott Paul Woodell from GeoDesign just to run you through, um, that section.
Thank you. So, um, Mr. Chairman, um, the applicant, um, undertook um, a series of, um, investigations regarding human health and site assessment. They were at the, um, based upon comments, uh, provided by AKRF in a, in the May twenty twenty-one memo where they, uh, AKR have identified uh, a need for a phase one environmental site assessment and a limited phase two environmental site assessment. So GeoDesign undertook those two, um, investigations. A phase one environmental site assessment is a, uh, very common tool for, uh, due diligence, uh, in the process of, uh, land transactions. It's an instrument by which, um, a buyer or seller or a third party can, uh, evaluate the environmental condition of a site that is done through, uh, a process of record review. State, federal, local records are reviewed. Um, and a, a site reconnaissance is performed. The entire site is inspected for any kind of issues or conditions or circumstances that may have, uh, detrimental environmental impact on the property. These are, um, uh, defined as uh, recognized environmental conditions, REC's, and the vernacular. We undertook the phase one. We identified, um, a handful of REC's, the, um, most significant of which, and the only one that, um, uh, is at a location that would be, uh, impacted by the proposed development at this point in time is the, um, identification that the site soils uh, had the potential to have been impacted by, um, course activities by primarily by turf maintenance activities, pesticides, et cetera. Uh, and so we proceeded to develop a phase two environmental site assessment work plan. The, the phase two site assessment is designed to investigate whether or not REC's, um, really, uh, exhibit environmental impacts. The phase two work plan was, um, reviewed and agreed upon by AKRF prior to implementation. The phase two investigation consisted of the collection and analysis of a number of, uh, environmental media, sixteen shallow soil samples uh, designed to represent areas of future site construction activities or, uh, large soil, um, excavation locations and at locations of proposed bedrock, uh, potable wells um, and at locations that were designed to characterize the existing, uh, greens and, uh, turf boxes, uh, tea boxes, excuse me, um, throughout the course. Additionally, we collected pond sediment samples and we collected a, a series of five potable water samples from existing site wells. These environmental samples were analyzed for, um, constituents that are, are anticipated uh, based on course activities, um, primarily pesticides and metals. Um, um, we also, uh, developed, um, appropriate screening criteria uh, to which the laboratory analyses were compared. Um, we just determined that the appropriate soil screening criteria was the commercial soil cleanup objectives that are provided by, uh, New York State DEC. Uh, the potable water samples were compared to New York State health standards. And in a nutshell, the findings were that, um, in a small number of, uh, samples, three to be exact, shallow soil samples from three of the coarse greens, uh, were identified to contain, uh, the metal mercury at a con- at concentrations that slightly exceeded the applicable criteria, this commercial soil cleanup criteria. These findings, um, are not unanticipated, given the nature of uh, the, uh, many years of course maintenance, um, and chemical applications to various, uh, turf areas. We then developed, um, a series of mitigative measures to Um, we then developed, um, a series of mitigative measures to, um, address, um, the constituents that were found. The first and foremost mitigator measure is simply the fact that the print, the planned development um, under, um, um, Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival includes rewilding and restoration of large areas of the, uh, golf course to what can be described as pre-developing conditions. This we consider to be a very powerful mitigative measure to address, um, the limited soil, um, exceedances that were identified in the phase two. Further mitigative measures include, um, post, uh, seeker, uh, um, soil sampling, further, uh, soil investigation and characterization and other areas of the course. And we do this in order to develop a soil, um, management plan. This management plan will be developed to identify areas that require management and the, the correct means and methods to, um, address areas of exceedance during and after construction activities. These may include, uh, some combination of, uh, soil removal or soil capping or some kind of cut fill management scenario that's yet to be determined. Um, additionally, we are, we are, are proposing to develop and implement a community air monitoring plan, which is designed to protect not only onsite construction workers during soil excavation and soil disturbance activities, but also, um, through, um, particulate air monitoring of perimeter of the construction area. It will protect the surrounding community and, um, and ensure that, um, uh, detrimental dust, um, and, and, uh, chemical constituents do not migrate offsite during construction activities. The, um, future potable wells will be subject to mandatory Putnam County Department of Health, uh, testing requirements. Um, uh, in addition, several of the existing wells will continue to be monitored, um, by Putnam County Department of Health. Um, and finally, any, um, mitigative measures will be implemented to address any kind of potable water issues that may be identified during the testing process. That's it.
Okay, thank you. AKRF, Ron.
I think that was a good summary by Paul. We, you know, we went back and forth a couple of times, um, on the phase two results and what we should identify as mitigation, even though it's really what they're proposing as part of the construction process. Um, you know, the soils management plan and, and the community air monitoring plan, those are going to happen as part of construction. I'm sure we could, when the time comes, you can make that condition, you know, of the, of the resolution. So it's in there. Um, like Paul said, the Putnam County Health Department is, has to review, has to uh, give them a permit or approval for the water supply. So that's going to happen through that process. There's going to be testing and um, they'll do whatever the health department asks there and, um, yeah, I think what they've laid out here is a good, it's a good plan. They have, you know, like, like Paul mentioned, the, um, the nature of the project and, and, uh, rewilding the golf course greens is in and of itself a good, uh, strategy to restore those to more natural state. Um, you know, not using the heavy pesticides like would be happening with the golf course use. Um, not routinely, you know, manicuring the greens anymore, just kind of letting the flowers grow in and, um, I think that's in a, like, part of the project is by itself is a good, uh, measure. So nothing else for me to add.
Thank you, Aaron. Board members? Okay, one, one brief comment and from me or question for me for, uh, Paul. Uh, uh, Paul, page hundred and thirteen. Uh, third paragraph in the bottom, quote, detected mercury concentrations exceeded both commercial and protection of groundwater SEOs and samples collected from greens fifteen, sixteen, eighteen on the parcel reserve for H, HBSF. Um, so can you just talk about that? Cause I'm, I'm a layman, but I seeing mercury at three different greens, mercury sounds like not a typical pesticide based. I don't know. Seems a little anomalous and seems a little scary. Again, uh, what do I know about a chemist, but, uh, can you talk about the severity of finding mercury in three different greens and what's going to be there and what are we going to do about it, if anything?
Certainly. Thanks, Mr. Chairman. So, um, you know, mercury and other metals, even including arsenic and lead and things like that are, um, have been constituents of turf chemicals in the past. And we have to remember that the the turf, um, at the course has been maintained since the early nineteen sixties and, and, um, chemistries, um, applied chemistries change over time. Luckily, chemistries these days are much more benign than they were at one time. Um, metals, um, have a tendency to, um, not biodegrade, um, they tend to linger in soil. It's kind of a good thing in some ways because, uh, metals will adhere to soil particles and remain in place and not necessarily migrate or um, dissolve through infiltrating water as readily as other chemicals do. In terms of comparison of the, of the findings of the, um, analyses to the commercial soil cleanup standard, the numbers were roughly, um, two to three times the commercial soil cleanup standard. And, and so in the grand scheme of things, it's you know, um, not even a full order of magnitude exceedance. The, uh, we believe that the reason they, they were founded, the greens, um, and not at other sampling locations is probably due to just different maintenance practices at the greens versus T-boxes and fairways and roughs. The, 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 the greens are, are a much more critically maintained portion of the course and the, the, the chemicals and the rates of application are probably different greens than in other areas. Um, with regard to the exceedance of the protection of groundwater standard. Um, it's a very conservative standard. Um, they, uh, we will continue to, uh, look to the Putnam County Department of Health to maintain Montin, uh, monitoring of the quality of all potable well on the site. And we have actually committed to not only, uh, analyzing uh, future water samples for Putnam County Department of Health mandated constituents, but any other constituents that are appropriate based on the findings of our, our phase two investigation and on our future soil uh, characterization program such that uh, if there are chemicals like mercury, for example, that are found, um, we will voluntarily add them to the, uh, analytical protocol for potable wells.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions? Heidi, please.
Um, I, I can't find a page that shows where the, uh, those greens are with the mercury contamination. What's going on top of that? Are the, is that soil going to be disturbed? Cause, um, uh, that would seem like, uh, the, the worst thing to do for those areas, but I wasn't sure, you know, because that would maybe allow the mercury to get out, migrate from that area where maybe it's kind of contained now. Um, but what's on top of those?
Um, you know, for the most part, uh, the, the, the three greens, um, are, are not sites of direct, um, construction activities at this point. Um, and I will also point out that the purpose of the soils management plan is to, um, address the exceedances of the criteria. So in other words, the commercial soil cleanup criteria is a human health criteria, basically speaks to human exposure to those soils. And the purpose of the soils management plan is to mitigate that human exposure. So once, once a, a full and complete understanding of the extent of these exceedances are identified, the soils management plan will, um, prevent human exposure to those areas through one of a number of different methods, including removal or capping or rewilding in a manner that, um, people would not um, be impacted by those soils or exposed to those soils. For example, if, uh, you know, a large, uh, wildflower area was, was grown at the, at the site of, um, those soils exceedances. There wouldn't be human exposure to those soils anymore. So it's a, it's an isolation, uh, method.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Uh, all right. Barring any questions, I think we have reached the end. It's been, uh, six plus hours across the, the two meetings to have this conversation with, thank the applicant for their thoughtfulness uh, and diligence and AKRF for their advice and my fellow board members for their thoroughness. Um, I think the, what I'd like to suggest is, and I know Dan is interested in next steps, we, we, uh, given our normal course of business, I think what Thursday, Cheryl is the drop time for, uh, new, uh, requests for our next board meeting. Is that correct? Thursday and today? Okay, so this Thursday, I believe is the, the drop dead date for our December sixteenth meeting for items to be put on. I'm going to look at the agenda and as I've been doing for the last two years, we create an agenda uh, over the weekend and send it out on Monday. What I'd like to do is barring having an overwhelming item put on our agenda and it has been a pretty overwhelming uh, time. I think Bob, you're going to have to give the board more than ten dollars each, uh, from, uh, from, um, what the hell is it called?
Oh, well, main course.
Main course. Thank you. Yeah, Kevin and me, you're going to give us more than ten, maybe fifteen bucks this year to, to keep us going. Steve, relax. I'm just kidding. Don't worry. Don't worry, Steve.
First, the smoking thing now. There's, you're going to thin ice, my friend.
Oh, yeah. Fire me. Please, please fire me.
Hey, Bob, give me a cable.
Then try to fix your main memory.
Personal services, yeah. It's getting bad. So, um, what we do, we'll look at that, uh, situation. Hopefully it's manageable and we can add uh, a chunk of time, maybe a half hour to have, uh, the conversation that John is going to do. Hopefully John's had enough time, two weeks, two weeks and two days to prepare to that. You're on mute, John.
Hey, I thought you were saying I had to have it done by Thursday.
No, no, two weeks, two weeks from Thursday.
Okay, yeah, no problem. Thank you.
So what, what, so what, what we'll do is I'm not, I, I can't guarantee yet. Let us see what the volume of work is that we have already for the, because we're, we've given you guys multiple separate meetings, so I can't just keep allocating the entire board to this project. Uh, we have many projects in front of us, but on December sixteenth, our normal board meeting, we'll see over the weekend, uh, what we have. And then on Monday, Dan, I'll come back to you and let you know whether we can put on a half hour on the board to talk about John's thing. And in that meeting, we will also then talk as a board about when we'd schedule the, the public hearing, uh, from that. Okay, so that's the, that's the, uh, so I can't give you an answer right now, but let's see what, what comes in by Thursday and we can decide over the weekend what we've got.
That's the best you can do. Uh, we appreciate it. Thank you.
The only thing I'd say, Neil, and I'm not trying to push it any way at all, it's just that now that we've gotten through the, um, EAF, you know, A through O, I don't anticipate that the next steps are going to be terribly lengthy. The board will deliberate whether it's prepared to schedule a public hearing or not.
Correct.
If it is, it could certainly do that in a short period of time. If not, well, then ask to be put over to January, but you know, I, I don't think you're looking at a big chunk of time, uh, at the December. I just don't think, you know.
Yeah, well, I, it, yes, on discussing the date, me, but I'm not sure I have, I don't have an answer for you on the analysis that John's doing. We've spent a good hour tonight talking about traffic, so I don't want to prejudge how long we need, but it needs to be discussed. So that will be the plan on December sixteenth. So we'll come back to you then, uh, or actually, I'll come back to you on Monday with what we, with the plan will be for the sixteenth and whether we get you on uh, with an expectation to get that public hearing in January. Okay?
Yes, sir.
All right. Uh, motion to adjourn. Peter, Laura's second, all in favor? All right. Thank you very much, all. Good discussion.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.